The special meeting of the CAC, this is February 27th. Call to order and we'll start with roll call and I do not have a list of all committee members in front of me. So to keep it as simple as possible, we're just going to go around the room. So I see Chuck Holman as first here, but he is online. Chuck, can you confirm?
Yes, Chuck Holman.
SJ?
Yep, SJ, fine.
Perfect. Mr. Winchester?
Present.
Miss?
Please.
Thank you. And you did replace.
Mr. Fenster for District Six.
Perfect. Mr. Bustamante? He has been replaced. Yes.
Yep, Kathleen McCardle.
Kathleen is present. Sorry, the name and replacements have not been top priority. We'll run with it. Ms. Evans?
Present.
Mr. Rayburg here and Matt Ferkshank present. So we've established a quorum. Did I miss anyone?
Mr. French.
Ah, Bob, my apologies.
Bob French is online.
Thank you. And with that, we've established quorum. So I'll do the public involvement announcement. AMAS committee meetings are open to the public and the public is provided an opportunity to comment at each meeting. Business items are presented by staff or consultant. After the committee discusses the business item, the public is invited to formally comment. Each participant will have three minutes to speak on their topic, a couple of housekeeping items. If you are joining us virtually and you are not a member of the committee, please turn your camera off when you are not speaking on an item. If you are joining us by phone, to mute and unmute the microphone, press star six. Any questions? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda. This is SJ.
Thank you, SJ. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Nancy. Are there any objections to approving the agenda? I'm sorry, are there any discussions or questions about the agenda?
Only that I don't believe we need to approve many minutes as the next item, action item.
Duly noted. Any additional items? Hearing none, is there any objection to approving the agenda? Hearing no objections, the agenda is approved. We do not need to approve any minutes, so we'll move directly to our action items. Five A Resolution Regarding Transit Route R, Chugiak Eagle River. So Aaron is going to display the resolution and Chuck, Mr. Holman had brought this resolution. So Chuck, would you like to, actually just as a order of housekeeping, just a reminder, we usually want to get the motion on the table first and second discussion, then we can vote it up or down. So.
So we do introduction of the item first.
Okay.
And then we do committees, if they have any questions, then we ask for public comment and we ask for actions.
Gotcha. So we don't even need to have an action item to even discuss it?
Yeah, you just started. So whoever wants to talk to introduce it, go ahead. Chuck, yours.
Yes. So the resolution basically deals with the Chugiak Eagle River community has minimal bus service just from downtown Eagle River. Route R would be a community route that would run out to North Birchwood Loop and then by the senior center and the old Glen Highway and would really serve the community. And it, you know, I think would actually enhance the use of the existing bus route from Eagle River to Anchorage. And so I'd ask that you support this.
Can somebody please show the resolution? It's not visible online.
Yes, sorry. Thank you. Right, switch tabs. There you go. Do you see now?
Yes.
Thank you.
So are there any questions about this resolution, Nancy?
Yes, through the chair, Mr. Holman, is this the identical wording of the resolution passed by the community council? If not, how has it been changed? And one more question, at the last meeting, when it first came up, I discussed a desire to include language for coordination of this route or scheduling along this route with school buses to serve the maximum numbers to out-of-dome transport. Those three questions.
Yeah, through the chair, Chuck Holman. Yeah, the resolution is very similar to the one passed by the Eagle River Community Council. We kind of decided just to leave it, the route R, as the transportation plan came up with. And that asking for modification, I just left that alone. But I do agree with you that, you know, trying to bring Eagle River High School into the route would be beneficial. But we left the resolution and as just addressing Route R.
So just a point of information, if once we got to, under our current format, we got to our actionable item and there was a desire to modify the resolution, we could have an amendment if there was a particular. Just making sure that we do have some level of flexibility. Any other questions, comments? Is there any interest from members to see the actual route up on the screen?
Yes, through the chair, I'd like to see the actual.
Bob French here, I did have a question. I would assume that the actual scheduling of that is, has not been set yet, is that correct?
Yeah, it, yes.
This is just a proposed route. There has been no funding allocated to this route. This is all hypothetical at this point. It's just requesting to prioritize this round, potentially seek funding, but it is a, you can see in the bottom right where it gives two particular models. If it was a thirty, every thirty minute would be 3.2 or every sixty minute, what was it, one point?
Okay, the routes on the screen, sorry, can't really blow it up too much. Sure, you're good. More.
Great, I see. So it's different because the existing Eagle River route goes to, there's kind of a transit center loop that it runs.
The only route that we have right now comes into downtown Anchorage Highland and yeah. This was, this was our big route we used to have in the day. I think it's actually the same route, maybe Chuck can correct me. We had a lot of advocacy when bus routes were removed from Chugiak Eagle River. This is a major desire for the community. This would advocate for non-motorized, but also acknowledge that there is a heavy price tag and when there was restructuring with the routes with Anchorage to decrease the frequency in Anchorage, part of that cost was cutting some of the outlining routes and this was one of the routes that was cut. But this has still remained a priority for the community, Birch Community Council. I did also pass this resolution. To provide the context. Go ahead.
Through the chair, since there aren't really any label features on that, we'll leave the map up, please. And can I assume that near that green swath is Chugiak High School? So Chugiak High School is on the route?
South Birchwood. So that's South Birchwood exit right there, that's Birchwood Loop coming back on North Birchwood, crossing back onto the highway of the old Glen, all the way to Eagle River and then it looks like it takes Eagle River Loop Road. I think you guys are familiar with the Eagle River portion right there, but that's Birchwood Loop, the little ninety degrees zigzags, South Birchwood exit.
So just to confirm, Chugiak High School is at the corner of that?
Yes.
And it's on the right of the?
Here.
In there, I think.
Correct, yes.
One more question. I'm assuming that the, the square at the bottom catches Eagle River High School? Is that, are we over further north from there? Okay.
No.
Never mind.
See where we are now.
Probably not.
I don't know what neighborhood that is, so it's.
Should be another school down there.
Is that where the Walmart is?
I don't know.
There it is.
What is that?
No, it does not include Eagle River High School.
Yeah, Highlands farther down right there. So that's going up Eagle River Road. Chuck, are you familiar where that little square turnaround is?
I would believe that's probably Eagle River Lane or the, or Eagle River Ravenwood Elementary School. It looks like they would be doing kind of a, you know, a little horseshoe U-turn there to come back down. And so it makes a circular route even, so if they did go down to like Eagle River High School, that would add a little bit to the route, but that's something that I guess we could ask for, but they, this is what's the, is in the 2020 transportation plan. And at this point, I thought the simplest thing was to just, you know, ask that this be put in place. And I think it goes along with, you know, our AMAT's plan, the review, everything, a lot of it had to do with public transportation and, you know, trying to reduce the amount of vehicles being used. So, you know, if we're going to try and eliminate the people using their vehicle, we got to provide them an alternative and just get this thing going up and going and let them make the minor technical modifications as needed.
Thank you, Chuck. Do we have any additional committee members wishing to ask questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll open it to the public. Does the public have any questions and comments they'd like to express?
I would. My name is Angeline Waskey. I'm with Native Village of Eklutna. I'm a trustee on the council. So this is hypothetical. So there could be a change in the route then, or is, is that what Birchwood wanted to stick with?
No, I think Birchwood's open to modifying this route. This was the route that was proposed by the trans, I don't know which portion of the MOA it's called, but this was the proposed plan. So I don't think there's major objection from the community to modify the plan. It was just that there was a little bit of a concern to modify the original project with concern that it might derail it and the example might, maybe there's a high ridership with this particular route and if the route was modified, lowering the, I don't know, I'm not sure if that's the metric, how many people use the, the bus could lower the priority of the project.
Okay, I grew up out in Eklutna and I remember there used to be a route all the way out to Eklutna. Morning and night, that used to be multiple, multiple times. I quit doing that. And then they stopped doing Eklutna Thunderbird Falls altogether. I mean, if we eliminated the whole loop and then went to Eklutna, there'd be, there'd be people from both those communities. And so that's just my suggestion.
I think you bring up a good point with the connectivity of different communities and being connected to the native village that has a lot of merit.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to put that out there.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Are there any other comments from the public or questions? Hearing none, we'll move to action. Can I get a motion to move this resolution?
All friends move to approve.
Can I get?
Chuck Holman, second.
Thank you. So we are in discussion for the actionable item as the resolution written. Go ahead, SJ.
Mr. Chair, I guess one question I've got and wondering if we need to address it in this resolution. If we're talking about 3.2 million adding to the budget for transit, is that money budget already or should we also be advocating for an increase in budget?
So I believe there was two different dollar amounts depending on the frequency. Gotcha, on the duration right there. I would assume that they have a allocated budget for the bus route and how they choose to use those dollars would be the subject of prioritizing routes. So that is a good point, though without additional funding, they would be within those constraints. Go ahead.
Through the chair, yeah, I guess, I think the people mover has made an effort to look at cost efficiency and let use patterns that it wants to support with its current routes. So to add an additional route, I think we should encourage additional funding so that there wouldn't be Robin Peter to pay fall situation. And in addition, if the movers of the emotion, motion would be open to it, that we'd like to add our intent that the final alignment of the route, consider the potential for adding in Eagle River High School and for Eklutna, the London Northern Communities, at least for some part of the service.
Okay, so you want to make an amendment?
Yes.
You moved to amend.
So you're requesting a friendly amendment is what I heard right there.
Yes.
So the maker of the motion, Mr. French, just to clarify these friendly amendments was that the route would incorporate Eagle River High School and the native village of Eklutna in some capacity and to request additional funding outside of the allocated budget.
Yes, with regard to the modifications of the route, I think I have wording in there about the cost efficiency or something like that. Yeah, same way twice. Anyway, to, to consider was what I put in, to consider extension of the route to serve Eagle River High School and Eklutna Village and the Northern Communities to some extent.
So keyword consider.
Consider, and to some extent.
Mr. Holman, do you agree to those changes?
Yeah, I'll agree.
Okay.
Mr. French would also agree with those changes.
Perfect. So the friendly amendment has been accepted. So now back to the original motion as modified. Are there any other comments, questions?
Through the chair, just for clarification, when you rephrased it, did you rephrase the addition of funding? We request the addition of funding rather than reallocation of funding?
You're requesting additional funding beyond the original allocated funding?
Yes.
Yes. All right.
I got it.
Thank you. Are there any objections to approving this motion? Hearing no objection, the motion passes.
Great, I'll probably need some help to craft the language exactly how you did it on it and we'll get it ready for your signature. Yeah, we'll figure out what to do there. Get it ready for TAC PC. I don't know if we'll make it March, but maybe April, so.
Perfect. So moving on to five B tip amendment two comments. So I was going to try to keep the same precedence that we've done in the past and that's committee members that have taken the time to review tip amendment two have submitted comments already, submitted comments for pre-review. We'll have those comments put up. Each person that brought forth comments will have a opportunity to speak on their comments. And once they've had an opportunity to speak on, we'll actually break that down to each comment that they've made, the committee will choose to, they will vote to adopt those comments or not. Is there any issue with that format? Hearing none, we'll turn it over to Ms. Pease.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The first one's probably not phrased, this phrase is a question and I would like to sort of rephrase that as a statement. So the statement would be to reiterate support for funding levels to ensure two critical safety features in the Rabbit Creek Road rerotation. So I would like to speak to that, or do you want the next one?
So if you were on, you're trying to get the community's, the CAC's support right here. So providing enough, I guess, initial kind of summary of your comments of where it's coming from and if you're comfortable with that level.
Yep. So as summarized in print, well, a little bit background, Rabbit Creek Community Council is served by really a trunk road. It's a major collector, but it functions rather like an arterial in that it serves probably ten square miles or more of South Billside. It's the only direct route on and off of Billside. So the traffic volumes are high and getting higher and the speeds are pretty high. It's a two-lane road that was built back in homestead days, so it also has a lot of direct access driveways. And the combination of that through traffic and turning traffic makes it pretty unsafe. So this project rose to the high priority with AMAS and was originally scoped as a reconstruction and it had a big, big price tag. But work has been done a little bit on the foundation of the road over the years and it was decided that it could be re-scoped as a rehabilitation and still be built with safety benefits and so forth. The amount of funding has been going up and down in the tip and the community council have made some initial attempts to find out what's in and what's out in terms of the features that funding will cover, but we are uncertain. And so this, the council would like support to make sure that the funding levels ensure two of the safety features in particular, which is turning accommodations and separated non-motorized pathway.
Thank you. We'll open this up to questions by other committee members.
So I will mention, I did email you Nancy a while back, letting you know that the reduction in funding was a mistake. Should have actually probably gone up versus down and that the determination about turn pockets and the separated non-motorized pathway has nothing made at this point and still being, needs to be looked at. For the turn pockets, they have to do an analysis to determine the best fit for the project. So, you know, if you guys want to continue having a comment regarding it, just kind of be aware of that. I think advocating for separated non-motorized pathway and turn pockets is fine. Just recognize that the funding change you see in the amendment is going to be different.
Yes, thank you, through the chair. Is that uncertainty of funding that for the community council to ask that the features be remembered be the first, to main purpose of the project be confirmed?
And just to clarify, the actionable item here is for staff to verify whether the funding reduction will jeopardize the two critical safety features. That is the core of this comment.
I rephrased that, I'm going to swallow it on, I rephrased that at that outset. Asking that this action be to reiterate support for funding levels to ensure safe turning functions and a separated non-motorized pathway.
Okay, so the comment that we have right there has just been changed completely and now you're expressing support for those two projects? Is that what I understood?
Yes.
So now as the, the comment's been changed, are there any other questions, comments on it before we voted down or up?
I'm sorry, I'm a little bit confused. Aaron said that the funding for RDY 00005 has actually been increased. Could you tell us how much those numbers are?
It's not very much, but it's going to be over at or above the 31.65 million that is listed on there. So there was an error in what DOT sent me because of some changes that were being made in the tip. So we're going to be putting it, I don't know what the exact number is. We're not through the public comment period and I'm waiting to get the final number from DOT, but it's either going to be put back to the 31.65 or above the 31.65. We don't know which at this point.
And, and my other clarification was that Matt said something about two projects or two different comments. Are we, we looking at more than one?
So Nancy just substituted it. So you have the written comment up there. She has now removed that and replaced it with expressing support for what specific to?
Yes, through the chair, I would say I haven't removed that comment because all of the supporting information remains the same. But instead of that first line, ask AMAT staff to verify whether this funding reduction will jeopardize two critical safety features. I'm asking that it say, reiterate support for funding levels to ensure those two critical safety features, safe turning functions and a separated non-motorized pathway.
Any other questions? Any objections to this comment?
There's one other thing.
Go ahead.
Since Bob was a little bit confused, that Aaron did say he is not sure whether these two items are in the scope at the current time. That, that was, it's not turned yet. So we are making a comment to support something that is on that.
No, what's not in the scope is specifically following up turn pockets. There are different turning features that can be used besides turn pockets. What has to be determined is what is the best turning feature for the road, which is in the project description right now, to do something about the turning features. The community council has been advocating specifically for turning pockets. That hasn't been determined yet and still has to be as part of the project process. So what Nancy is asking for, and I wrote down, reiterate support for funding levels to support critical safety features or, it's kind of mixed up, but support critical features for safe turning functions and separated non-motorized pathway.
Yes, thank you.
And then continue with the rest of the sentence towards says Rabbit Creek Community Council requests community recognition of the safety importance, blah, 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 the rest of them is all in the rest. Okay.
So are there any objections to this comment? Hearing no objections, the comment is adopted. Moving to the next comment.
Yes, through the chair, this project Academy Drive Van Garde Drive area traffic circulation improvements has a start and stop. It will extend from Brayton Drive to Abbott Road. Originally, this was going to be a companion project to a full freeway interchange. And there was going to be a roundabout, or two roundabouts, if you can remember, at Brayton Drive and Academy Drive. It is not clear to me that there will be any such traffic management or traffic control feature at that intersection. And my concern is that putting this upgraded, straighter, faster route through to the Abbott Community, a commercial center will increase the number of vehicles, out-of-area vehicles, using it as a through route to get to the commercial center, coming down Brayton Drive. And Brayton Drive is demonstrably very unsafe. There have been a couple of fatalities and maybe some near, some serious accidents in my recent memory. So I would like this project to include traffic control at the Brayton Drive, then Academy Drive, Brayton Road, Academy Drive intersection.
Questions, comments? Hearing no questions, comments. Are there any objections to approving this comment? Hearing no objections, this comment is approved. Next comment?
Yes. The non-motorized facilities inventory and mapping is a key foundational document for connecting our active transportation system. Just as roadway facilities. Um, just as roadway facilities. And amenities are mapped in inventory, including things like streetlights and signposts and culverts. Um, and inventory of the infrastructure for the active transportation system is valuable and needed. Um, right now, there's a recreation trails plan update underway, and part of the purpose of that is to identify. Connections, um, and inventory would be, seem to be essential to that. Especially in areas where the active transportation network is currently in Kuwait. So I'm asking, this, this project has right now been zeroed. Um, but with the recreation trails plan update underway. I'm asking that some of the money originally intended for this project be transferred to the recreation trail plan update. Um, for targeted inventory and mapping assistance.
Questions, comments? Are there any objections to improving this comment? Hearing none, the comment is approved. Nancy?
Yes, um, with regard to the AMAT's safety plan, um, before introducing this. I would like to ask, um, through the chair, Mr. Young Ellen, um. If there is any current AMAT's safety plan, and if there's some alternative approach to any that safety plan.
So the AMAT safety plan is, uh, anticipated to be approved next month.
Okay, so the funding, it, it's already been funded and done?
Yes, that's why it's being removed. However, um. There, there's been a thought of trying to figure out how often to update the safety plan. You know, we want to be realistic with the constant need for the data. Um, as well as, um, staff funding levels. So, uh, there's also going to be a change to the safety targets from the federal side of things, they're, they're readjusting them. Uh, to not necessarily have to be every year, but every few years, because. It's hard to show improvement year after year when it takes so long for projects to be improved. Um, so we're still trying to figure out how often we want to update the safety plan. So for now, it's shown as being removed, but through the public comment period. Um, we may actually make an adjustment to keep it in and show funding in twenty-six. If there's a need to get the update started by twenty-seven, so we're still figuring out the update cycle, so, um. You know, I don't know if you guys need a comment, but I did just want to let you know that we are trying to figure out that update cycle, so we're not sure what we're going to be doing. Uh, this item in the tip at the, at the time. We may have to readjust it to instead of say AMAT safety plan, say. Update to AMAT safety plan and then put a new description and something, still trying to figure it out.
Ms. Pease, are you looking to remove your comment or still look forward to it?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I think I will remove the comment, given that, um, AMAT staff seem to be, uh, aware of and. Representing the need for update funding.
Perfect.
I have a question, just refresh. Uh, Aaron, was the safety plan done totally in-house, or was there some?
Now, we had a consult, we had, uh, fair and peers, hers from outside, um, pretty good group, um. Who did the consultant, we did a lot of public outreach on it, uh, did a number of public meetings. Uh, to get people to come and take a look at it. We have five corridors where we've done basically a. Kind of profiled the corridor, so we look at the corridor as a whole and say, here are improvements along the corridor that are needed that can help with some of the safety concerns. We don't specifically say that this will address everything in this one location, because we want to leave it flexible for when projects come along. Um, and we've also done, um, and will be adding in a countermeasures toolbox. So basically, it's just a huge list of all the things we could be doing that'll help. Um, feed into the cycle of the M T P, the tip and project development. So very similar to what was done with the, uh, T D M, the E M A T D M, where they had the action toolkit at the end that kind of really pushed it. Uh, it, it was easier for it to get started and move implementing it.
I guess my question was coming from, and, um, I don't want to get too much in the weeds, but. It just seems like there's a lot of time to get consultants on board, and you guys have a large amount of staff. And if they're trying to do some recurring thing, it's just like. It almost seems like it takes a half a year just to hire someone, and if you're trying to get something done. On a cycle, you need to, you know, start.
Term contract.
Early year or such, start.
Yeah, we're limited by the munis purchasing department, they're very strict in what we can and can't do, and it does take about six months to get a consultant on board. And there's not much we can do about that, and we start early and it still takes us forever. So we're aware of it, we're trying to make it the best we can, but there are limitations of what we can and can't do. So.
Thank you. Moving down the line?
Yes, through the chair, um, the Seward Highway thirty-sixth Avenue interchange, I'd like to put this forward to the committee. With questions to staff before proposing any question. Um, what caught my eye on this one is that the justification was it was added to the tip of the request of DOT. And given the very expensive cost of this project, hundred fifty million. And this location in a busy commercial center of town. And the, also the unknown schedule for the next intersection down the line, which would be, um. You know, farther to the north, I would like to find out. Whether AMAT did scoring and analysis and outranks in comparison to other roadway projects in the, in the M T P twenty fifty. Which of course isn't quite adopted, or is adopted, sorry.
Well, this was, this is actually a project in the twenty forty M T P, which should be adopted in T P, so. Um, so it scored high enough to be included in there. What the score is, I don't know, I have to go back and look. Um, I believe it also is in the twenty fifty M T P, so it scored high enough to be included there. I have no idea what's going on with these projects. Uh, DOT doesn't really know what's going on either, as you can see from the STIP not being approved. Uh, because if they were to look at the STIP right now, this project is not in the STIP. But F H W A has made a weird change recently for DOT. Um, if anybody's been following the saga and looking at the, the STIP website, there's, there's the corrective actions from F H W A for the STIP. And one of the things they say in there is if a project is in a tip. So AMATs or other M P O, or there are other tips that exist, it can't also be in the STIP. I cannot go into more than that, that's just the information being given by F H W A. If you don't know what it means, we're still trying to work on it. A lot of work to go through. Um, so I don't really have a whole lot of information for you on this project. I know there are other DOT people here. But, uh, I don't necessarily want to put them on the spot if they're not comfortable answering. Um, but I unfortunately just don't have a lot of information for you about this project, other than maybe what you all see, um, out there.
Uh, little confused, so the hundred fifty million dollars, this is in the tip or was just a pass-through and listed on the tip and it was coming from STIP funding? Previous STIP fund, you have no clue, okay?
No, 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 it's, it's not, it's in the tip, just because it's in the tip doesn't mean it's tip funding.
But it was passed, uh.
It's not this path through, it's DOT's funding.
Exactly.
For their projects.
So what do you call that? And when I'm saying pass, I don't mean pass through.
DOT's funding.
Gotcha, so it's a DOT funding project, but it's listed on the tip for the requirement?
It's required to be in the tip per federal regulations and be in M T P.
Mr. Chair, I, I, if I may, uh, this is S J, well, those of you online, I, you know, I was in on the M C R P L discussions. And this appeared to be the first project to come out of that process. I think that's, I mean, I, but that's the only connection that I can see, really.
You hit on the dot, that's what I was thinking, it was, it was part of the P L, yeah.
Right, it's not actually the first, sorry, the first was going to be the Tudor Road Interchange, but that was also removed from the STIP.
Through the chair, um, Mr. S J, could you please tell me what M C R?
Oh, I'm sorry, M C R is Midtown Congestion Relief Planning and Environmental Linkages Study. It was a study done about five years ago. Um, it started out about five years ago by Dow, uh, for DOT, um, to deal with kind of. The idea was to decrease congestion, uh, along Seward Highway through Midtown.
It's basically the highway upgrade through.
Yeah.
Fred Meyer.
I mean, yeah.
Third and Sixth, uh.
I mean, it resulted in, you know, I mean, there are parts of the plant where we've got fourteen lanes of asphalt traffic.
Well, through the chair, um, the representatives that are close to this area, S J and Diana. Um, what has community council, community council directed on this project?
I mean, the, the, you know, First District is not in our area, I'll say we're, um, I wouldn't go as far as to say we're in the one, but, um, I mean. That, you know, I don't, I don't understand that, that, that either justification for it personally.
We have not had an update on this project in, in probably our, our council in a couple of years, so I don't know. What, does either of you find?
It's, uh, so I would just say, it seems like, it's not that this project might not be needed. It seems like a pretty large project, and it seems like there's a lot of information or context that we don't have right now. Uh, to say, get rid of this project, or, uh, I, I would urge slight caution of, I don't. Without having additional information, um, I guess I would urge caution that. We do have, I don't know if DOT is willing to, to speak on it. Is there any objection to, uh, asking DOT if they have any additional context to provide? Hearing none, is there any?
I don't have any.
Okay.
Hi, Mr. Chair, if I may, perhaps, if we want to make comment, it could be just addressing kind of the question, the real questions that we brought forward.
So true.
Yeah.
What is the status? What's the need?
Yeah.
Yeah, all that, that's, yeah, that seems much more responsible than, than saying we object.
Yeah, we object, yeah, exactly, yeah.
Chair, I think it might be prudent to ask also the fiscal constraint option of things. Because, you know, DOT has some large scale projects underway that seem to be pretty accelerated. Uh, the safer Seward Highway project is kind of the main focus right now, so the question would be. Is there funding for this in addition to other things that are going out there as part of the question? I think it is in here. Um, the cost efficiency, but like, it is, it mentioned, it's a very expensive project.
So is there available funding for this project? Uh, where does the need originate for this project? And was there any other kind of a generic comment as a committee we were?
Status update?
And a status update of this project?
Yeah, I would also add to that list the, uh. The sequencing of this project. Given, we also don't know what's going on with Tudor Intersection, I'm not sure of the timeline for the Seward to Glen connection.
Yeah, there's, I mean, we're, I expect, you know, we're expecting three to five years to break ground on something.
Okay, the status, need, fiscal constraints, sequencing, and, um. I would, I would, I would like to know updated traffic counts and projections and compliance with municipal land use plans. As noted in my first two items on, am I reading that?
Are there any objections to adopting this comment?
Sorry, any traffic? Counts?
Are there any objections?
I guess I'm not sure what the focus of the comment is, I mean, we're just asking for information.
Correct.
This.
We're not adopting that.
Be put in.
We're not adopting that, we're not, uh, adopting what's separate, yeah, just to be clear.
Yeah, we're not taking any. We're not recommending for it to be removed or kept in, but if we just ask for information, there's no mechanism.
Once we receive this information with our next C A C meeting, if we chose to take action, uh, to provide. This is a bigger project, it isn't probably going to come just from the tip amendment to a public comment, but if we did want to take a position in the next C A C meeting. Uh, that's where we could provide.
But it already.
I mean, they do, they do want a hundred thousand for twenty twenty-three and two hundred thousand for twenty twenty-four.
So twenty-three is already passed.
Yeah.
So it'd just be twenty-four.
Yeah.
Um.
Three and six million, twenty-four.
And so Amendment Two is recommending adding it to the tip. So if there's concern about adding it to the tip, now is your opportunity to.
Yeah, I, I actually, I would say, because, yeah, they are talking about basically taking nine million dollars in twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. I mean, I think given these questions, it's fair for us to recommend against having it in the federal fiscal programming. For twenty-four, twenty-five. Until this question, they can always add it once they answer it.
Okay, so we've, uh, got a couple of different comments all over the place right now. No, no worries, uh. So I guess to, there's nothing that excludes us from the secondary comments right there, but trying to keep this as clean as possible. Uh, are there any issue with the original comments that we provided right here? What we can get additional?
I guess what, um, maybe what we could be more asking is. For the T A C to thoroughly vet our concerns before they.
And make a recommendation, oh, that's fair, and make a recommendation based on.
Yeah, like just make sure that there, there is information, um. That these questions are, are considered.
So you're saying based off of the funding, uh, allocate, that there is funding available to the project? That there actually is a recommended need for this project? So based off all these comments, if they are, check the box, yes, then support it, but if they do not meet, check these boxes.
There's some questions. Concerning the validity of the project, then.
That's a, that seems like a reasonable model right there, is based off the answers we get. If there is funding, if there is an actual, uh. Backing behind why this project's being, uh, asked.
A, um, a coherent sequencing plan.
There, this is part of a, uh, sequencing of implementation for the, what are called Midtown congestion, uh, Midtown congestion relief.
Yeah, this project is called on M C R P L, so.
Well, I know we've worked all over the place, okay, go ahead, Ms.
I'd like to propose, um, to move that we, um. Request, um, the, request definitive information on the status, need, fiscal constraint. Sequencing, updated traffic counts and compliance with municipal land use plans. And that this information be provided to the T A C. For their evaluation, yeah, for their evaluation before they add this project to the tip.
Here's a little, so. Um, what you guys are approving here today are comments to send to the T A C. So there won't be enough time, like, this comment won't be acted upon until the T A C and Policy Committee say yea or nay. So I won't have, I, I won't be able to do anything until the Technical Advisory Committee or the Policy Committee say, yeah, we support you as staff. Getting all this information for us to be able to provide. So that's what you guys are commenting on. If you're wanting like a separate comment outside of the tip amendment comments to send to staff to be like. Collect this information, provide it to the Technical Advisory Committee members for their consideration when they review the public comments. I can do that, I just need to know what you guys want done. Do you want it included as the public comment response and wait to act on it until it goes to the T A C? Or do you want it as like a separate action for staff to do between now and when the T A C see the comments?
So a separate action would be the only way timeline that it would work, correct?
Yes.
So through the, through the chair, I think we can do both, and we have a motion on the floor. Or actually, that's a second, um, we are asking the T A C to act on this information, and I think we can take a second action, asking staff to provide this information to T A C.
Okay, so if you're talking about two different comments, then let's give Robert's rule, we've got a first motion.
Okay, so this is, yeah, we're, we're kind of off Robert's rules with these, we're not actually getting, uh, a motion discussion. For each comment, pretty much the way we're going down is we're.
Making comment and then.
Approving or not approving, uh, each comment right there.
Okay.
If we're taking a separate action though, we will need a, a motion and a second if it's outside of the. Uh, tip amendment to, uh, comments. So, uh, what I would recommend is it sounds like we're fine with the, uh, approving these tip amendments, it doesn't work timeframe wise right there. Then we can do a separate action, requesting staff to, uh, take action outside of tip amendment to, uh, C A C comment. Does that work, or?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I, I, I'm lost.
I mean, basically what I need from you all, so just, what do you guys want in the comment response summary? And then if you want something outside of the comment response. And then if you want something outside of the comment response summary, what do you want? That's what I need to know from you.
There was a desire to do both. So to do both, we have to approve it as a comment. And so that's what we're trying to do right now. And then separately, we will need a motion to request staff to take action on.
Okay.
Okay.
That's what I see.
So is there any objection to approving the comments, uh, that we discussed? You want to repeat them back, Aaron?
Well, the comments you discussed are, request the following information. Fiscal constraint, where does the need originate? Status update, what is the sequencing of the project? Updated traffic channels, uh, based on comment A. I'll copy what is in comment A. And then, um, compliance with Muni, I'll copy what is in, sorry, in, uh, B up there on the screen. Um, that's what you want brought into the, brought to the T A C as part, like as part of the process. So that would be your staff request. Request to staff. What you need to figure out now is what do you want for your tip amendment to comment related to this item?
So realistically, the way we have it right now is a pointless comment to, to the TAC. It's only our outside comment that will actually have bearing based on the timeframe, right? So is there any objection just to taking any outside action?
Well, you can have an action, you can have an action based on what I've heard the committee say. You can have an action for the public or the comment response summary that says technically, you know, requesting the technical advisory committee review this information to determine, uh, you know, the viability of including this project in the tip. That could be your thing because then you're saying staff outside of the comments, get this and then act on.
So we're changing that to asking the TAC to gather that information or staff to get that information.
So you guys are asking the T A C to review the information and determine if the project should still be in the tip or not.
Any objections? Hearing no objections, it's adopted. Uh, and while we're still on this train of thought right now, can I get a motion uh, to do a separate request to staff?
I mean.
I get a second discussion?
Hold on, sorry. Move was Diana.
Correct.
Second was Nancy.
Yes.
Thank you. If I don't get these notes, she'll play me alive.
Yeah, so, uh, uh, comments, questions?
Uh, Bob Frontier, I think the one thing that would be, I, I mean, maybe a little bit different would be to say something like we recommend that the, uh, thirty-sixth Avenue Seward Highway interchange not go forward until these questions are answered. I'm not, not sure if that's exactly different or not, but, um, seems like that's pretty much what we are asking for.
Okay, so, uh, that's different than the original motion that was put on the floor. Um, so either that, uh, are you looking to make a amendment, Bob? Or a friendly amendment or what are you looking for here?
Uh, I guess I, I would like to have a, a friendly amendment because it seems like we should be taking a direct action to either approve or are not approving. And I think really what we're trying to say is that there's not enough information that either we or the T A C has to be able to make a good decision about the project.
Okay, so, uh, without getting in discussion right here yet about this, uh, Diana, you're the maker of the motion. Do you accept the friendly amendment? Okay, uh, the second?
Accept.
Okay.
And so this is I'll just.
Okay.
So the request is that, um.
We say that it's denied unless.
Not to include.
Yeah.
Don't include. Project.
Uh, so.
Sorry, I just need to read, don't include the project. Request the T A C review the information from the request to determine if the project is viable to include. Okay.
That's fair.
Yeah. Sorry. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, so I guess I'll have my comment. I, I, I think keeping the open mind and then subjecting to automatically deny, uh, unless we don't get the information, uh, I think it's what we want is the T, the TAC to have the information to make the decision. I think of having the prejudiced already to deny the project if we don't get the information. Um, brings us back to taking an action without full context of it. So I'm, I, I don't support the, I supported the comments before, um, but I don't support the automatically deny unless they get the, uh, the feedback. Any other questions or comments?
I guess I'm, I'm looking at the, the, the scale of this, um, you know, we're talking about this year, next year, nine million dollars. And dealing with a tip where there is fiscal constraint, um, and this has not been requested by A M A. We don't know what the status is. Nobody can tell us who's, you know, it's not necessary that, you know, just considering the level of confusion and all that we really noticed there was a request from somebody at state DOT P F. I, I think it, I, I actually think recommending against it is reasonable on our part.
And just for clarity though, although it was included in the tip, it wasn't coming from tip funding, just for clarity.
Right, it's national highway, whatever funding.
Probably, yeah.
Well, it's, it's tip, it was. It's five hundred, five hundred thousand of state funding, so.
Well, uh, just out, I guess I was just trying to make the point. It wasn't part of the, although projects are showing, are on the tip for the requirement, it's not part of the tip program fundings.
I guess I would like to, um, to help train DOT when they really want a project and make their case to A M A's into the community and not just roll projects forward with this bigger price tag and these precise impacts without making the case.
Are there any other questions, comments? Hearing none, the, well, are there any objections to approving this motion? I, I will note my objection.
How do you have?
Thank you. Uh, the motion carries. Hearing no objections. Hey, next comment. Uh, so to kind of roll it up, uh, we have not had many projects, uh, in Chudieak River, especially, especially with the, uh, new M T P criteria, but we did have one uh, significantly large project, and that was Eagle River Road rehabilitation. Uh, so the initial portion of this project was two point five million for design uh, in twenty twenty-five and part of the tip amendment to, uh, removed the funding for this project. Uh, and the reasoning was is the DOT construction estimates of the project had significantly risen to, uh, sixty million dollars. And this was a direct tip funded project. And it surpassed, uh, tip funding fiscal constraints. So, uh, my request is to add the two point five million back for design, but to adjust the scope of Eagle River Road rehabilitation, uh, to be within fiscal constraints of the tip. And so I do not know what that amount was, but for example, the previous amount, and Aaron probably corrected you with thirty, thirty-five million.
No.
What was?
It was sixty million from the get-go.
It was, okay.
So the actual price tag is going to be higher than that.
So to adjust the scope to lower, uh, if we need to do it in a phased approach. Um, but this is the, one of the few projects that we have on M T P right there. Uh, this project is valued by the community and we will not have a project, uh, if we do not have the design of this project. So my ask is to add the two point five million back for design. And to adjust the scope to be reduced for the future tip.
So I'm always kind of weak on the procedural, but I have a question. If that money is put back, then I believe maybe the Fireweed Lane project will not have money because its money was new, taken away from twenty twenty-four and put into twenty twenty-five. Uh, correct, Aaron?
We, we moved the money around to various projects, so we basically would have to find it from other projects to put it back in.
There's no one specific this project's moved here.
We may have put it in the memo what it was, but we can, we would have to find it from somewhere in the tip funding.
But there's only like, I mean, that's a problem of why I looked at Fireweed Lane. You didn't have an alternative based on what you needed money for, for this year to take Fireweed Lane's money away, because that's the only place you could have gotten it. So I don't want that to happen in twenty twenty-five. You know, because you're already moving it out. So I, I don't know how to resolve that, but that's my concern of putting money back in when there is no money available.
So it's been in there with two point five in twenty twenty-five until this, uh, amendment where the funding, uh, was removed out of it. And I guess the, what I would come back to is, uh, motorized, excluding non-pavement, uh, replacement projects. If you remove the two point five, we're at a one to two percent of tip funding for motorized projects, uh, in Chudieak Eagle River. So this is the one project that we have. I understand that we will need to significantly adjust the scope to to be within it, but if we don't have this two point five, we won't have, and now it's been very clear with federal guidelines that the project has to exist on the M T P. Uh, Artillery Road is outside of fiscal constraints for the tip, tip funding, although it might be listed on the tip if there was ever, uh, but within tip funding restraints right there, artillery is too large. So we do have a lack of projects that we can, uh, move forward with.
Just, uh, just a quick question, just to be clear on, on where the constraint is. Are we talking basically the funds that are, that are coded as S T B G? Those funds basically have to total the set amount. Does that kind of follow your thought about in the?
And for fiscal constraint, yeah, so we get a set amount of money from various sources, S T B G, TAP, C R P and C M A. Um, every year, and we have to be fiscal constrained per year. Um, so every year has to be fiscal constrained. Then we have targets we have to meet based on A M A's policies and procedures of the policy committee set of how much is going towards roadway, non-motorized pavement, C M A. Um, and so we balance the program around that based on it. So when we say this project is too expensive, we mean that, you know, sixty million dollars, by the time we are all said and done, it's going to be too much for the A M A's to handle.
And that's why when I say amend the scope, so it's to mile six, if we can only do to mile three, uh, to reduce the scope to align with something that could be afforded. And a little bit of history on this one is I had a, in two thousand twenty-two, uh, some of the board members, Diana, I think you were here when, uh, I did a proportional of how much, yeah, Chudieak Eagle River got and, uh, uh, failed motion, but what came back is, well, you guys have a large project that's coming, uh, coming up. And that was Eagle River Road Rehabilitation. Well, now, uh, twenty twenty-five is the first component of this project. And now we're doing a tip amendment to, uh, to remove the, uh, design funding. So I'm really advocating for a way to acknowledge the fiscal constraints um, to reduce the overall project, but still be able to have a project that's listed on M T B that the community values that has, uh, major non-motorized components.
Well, uh, through the chair, I mean, we probably each have looked at this and saw, seen projects that we didn't know, I think, were worthy, but I don't know if it's appropriate to offer anything sacrificially to, to fund the Eagle River project. So I don't know if anybody wants to go down that line or not. I, I have, you know, I have one in mind that I think doesn't, is not cost effective.
So I'm assuming that the TAC, uh, would evaluate this. I'm not going to tell the, the TAC to defund, uh, a project. I'm assuming that they have a relatively holistic, uh, priority, uh, list of the priorities of the community. And they might be able to figure out a way to move forward. I, I, Aaron, probably, I don't think the two point five is going to be the real constraints. It's the future tip amount that is the.
Well, right now the two point five is constrained because it was removed to put towards other projects. So if we want to put it back, it has to come from another project.
Yes.
Or other projects. And I will say, you know, if you want funding for it, you need to come up with those projects. Because as it stands right now, staff's approach is no, not add it back in. So the technical advisory committee, if you don't say anything, is going to be like, staff, what do you recommend? And they say, I don't recommend it be added back in because we don't have the money for it now or in the future. So if you are wanting it to be added back in, you'll need to indicate where you would like the money to come from.
So the, the TAC would not find, uh, so basically unless we get a project to remove.
I mean, I can't speak for the TAC, but typically what they do is they ask staff, okay, what can be paid for those? Typically the T A C doesn't go through and say, okay, that project's going to be.
And I guess the point, yeah, the point that he's making really, what I'm hearing between the lines is the, our, our comment ought to thank that recommendation.
Yes.
And, um, uh, I don't know if you can recall, Aaron, or how was it that the project was targeted for to be removed or?
Because it was too expensive.
Because the construction.
Yeah, the outer years. Basically all the years we're looking at, okay, by the time we start getting to the outer years, we're at three hundred million plus for all of our projects. We start hitting a threshold that we can't reasonably foresee continuing with that. And so we have to make cuts somewhere. You'll see, this isn't the only project being recommended for removal due to staffing or budgeting issues. And so, you know.
So through, through the chair, if this is designed with, um, A M A's tip money, does that help put it farther down the line for funding from, I don't know, D N T, or I don't know what other funding sources might be available? Does it help to get a design on the books?
No, I mean, typically, typically you're not going to start a project unless you're certain that you're going to have the construction money. The feds don't allow you to just randomly start a project and hope sit there forever. They expect that when you start the design, you will get, the construction money will be available. And just because A M A starts it, doesn't mean DOT is going to have the funding available. I mean, we're having concerns whether they can afford some of the other projects that they're looking at too. You know, there's been a request to put artillery on the books to get that started. So the question becomes which, which is it? Because there's only so limited funding.
Um, Aaron, um, so in the, the old tip, was the sixty million just, uh, beyond twenty twenty-six, like sometime defined?
This wasn't a new tip. This was one of the projects that was added with this new tip.
Oh, and so when would the construction money have fit in? I mean.
It would be on twenty-seven because the current tip goes from twenty-four to twenty-six, so sometime in twenty-seven. And at the time we were unsure that the team who put it together, we were unsure if we were going to be able to afford it, but we said we might be able to because things looked good and then inflation went through the roof. And our projects have now exceeded costs everywhere. And so it's kind of part of the fiscal requirements that we look at our program to say, can we afford all of these projects?
And that's exactly why, uh, I think we're recognizing that we can't afford a sixty million dollar. We can't do all the way to mile six like we'd hoped. What if we could do to mile three and reduce that cost by half right there? But I guess the having to having, okay, so a question though. So previously we approved a comment before here is to add funding back in. We didn't.
System.
No, up on top right there, Nancy had requested to add funding back in for a project. Right?
She wanted funding from the non-motorized pathway inventories to be directly to the rectory on plan update. Cause they were taking funds out of basically the, that other, that was there now.
They canceled. They were throwing that out.
Yeah.
Please scroll, Aaron, just for a second.
And then this, this was about that funding was being reduced, but I told you it was an error and is not actually being reduced. This was the Vanguard Academy, you know, scope change. This was the non-motorized inventory and mapping. Or it's transferring funding from, that was being removed to the rect trails plan and then the safety plan. And then the thirty-sixth avenue interchange, then your comment.
And I guess, um, just elaborate a little, I don't know, but it won't make you feel much better than that, but so I looked at the Fireweed Lane and they took the money away from design and, um, they, they moved it to twenty twenty-six. And they they moved it to twenty twenty six. And then they aren't going to start construction till after that. It's it's in the last third, it's out here. And so I was like, well, how can I request them to do it now and not take that money away when it's not going to be used until sometime in the future? And that that's kind of how I look at this one too. It's it, you would like an Eagle River project, but it's still not going to make it go any quicker.
We won't have any, so it's all going to be what's on the MTP, right? MTP scoring criteria is driving without the policy committee, putting forcing projects on there. So taking away this, we're at about one percent. We had Eagle River Road several million, three tips ago.
So if you're looking from twenty ten till now excluding this road, the total funding onto Eagle River is about six percent of the overall program. Just for AMAT's projects. If you add in this project, it's like fifteen percent or whatever we said it was. If you add in the pathway project that's been asked by the community, you go up to about eight percent.
So when I look at non motorized, removing from pavement replacement.
We look at everything, not just, we look at everything in those funds. Typically, we don't actually even do that percentage breakdown by community because it's it's not how we fund things. So.
And I guess maybe would be more, I don't know if they have the time, but more groupable is like, see if there's a project that we all agree on that we can take the money from.
Is there a project? I guess I would open that up that.
I mean, I don't have the screen, so.
Yeah, I don't have the screen right in front of me, but.
Several pitches.
So I put up tip amendment number two, so you can see the projects that are available. So what you would basically want is two point five million roughly. We don't know the change of the scope is going to be, so we're just going to estimate in twenty four for the River Road Rehab. That right, that what it is?
Twenty five was the.
Twenty five, okay, so twenty five is what we need. Okay, so we're kind of looking at the the cost estimates that we have here. There's powder drives a little bit. Mountain Air Drive has some, so we'd have to remove two from there. Avenue Vanguard. Overtight pavement replacement.
And we can't, so either pavement replacements, we can't. Pavement replacements, I thought, weren't prioritized. I mean, DOT has the funding, they set the priorities. Oh, so pavement replacement, we could also.
Should we take it from pavement replacement? I just want to let you know, DOT and the muni are severely behind in pavement replacement.
Well, that that was one of the things that was in the the tip amendment that's kicked us off is they were adding like five million in the pavement replacement.
Yeah, we we were adding a lot more money to pavement replacing.
All right, so what is what is the Mount Air Drive project?
Mount Air Drive was one that was added in by the policy committee. It's a connection up in the hillside area to connect mountain or the Fairview Elementary School with some properties in the area as well. It's a emergency access road as well as other things. The project's underway under under design right now.
Yeah, from that area, so the chair, I can say that it's it's secondary egress to some of those subdivisions that are in place and as well as new land that hasn't yet been developed in the sort of foothills up there. So it's a little bit of a new infrastructure.
I have a question on the project through the chair. The Campbell Track Facility Alternate Entrance Alignment?
What about the port? Okay, that's not our funding, the port's not our funding.
Gotcha.
The Campbell Track Alternate Entrance, it's already been obligated, we're not in twenty three anymore, so you can't take funding.
Okay.
So anything in twenty three, you can't simply leave it in. Any other table will be on table five. Can't really change anything with. Table two, three and four are kind of interchangeable in the funding. Just know that, you know, we wouldn't be able to use TAP funding for Eagle River Road Rehab. You probably wouldn't be able to use CRP, the carbon reduction, because yeah, it's a hard one. So you're really looking for like STBG funding that would be used for it.
So like this cargo storage.
So we can't use the Seward Highway Thirty Sixth Avenue funding?
That's not our funding. Anything beyond table six is not AMAT's funding, save for like a few projects where we note otherwise. But the NHS funding is all DOT.
So the ones, how about the ones that have a MOA match?
MOA match? It's not really MOA match that you need to be looking at, it's the STBG funding.
So how about, just to keep the meeting going, and I appreciate you guys all looking for potential projects, and I recognize that. And staff may recommend not to do anything, but at least as a, say what?
You're suggesting people come to us?
Yes, and understanding that the staff may, the staff will recommend not to fund the project. But it's still recognizing that this project is valued and by removing the two point five. So I'll leave the comment as is. Unless there's any simple changes that the committee would like to see on it.
Only that instead of I, it should say we.
Thank you. Are there any objections to approving this comment? Here now the motion passes and I appreciate your honesty, Aaron, with. Thank you.
So the only change was change the I to we and then the rest is.
The chair, that's a little bit break.
Yes, of course.
Thank you, Ben, sorry, everyone. Yeah, we're, I mean, I'll make, I cannot say past five, I have to move. I have to go pick up my car.
I'm sorry, it's going to be a long one.
I know.
I look forward to it.
Sorry for the cough, I have a massive sinus infection they're trying to clear out. So they're shoving antibiotics down my throat and it is killing me.
It's going around.
So.
So is that all of the comments that we're going to do on the tip?
Right.
Those are all just submitted ones. I don't know if people have comments in.
Actually, that's a really good point is you did, oh, go ahead, Bob.
Um, yeah, I had one question and another comment. And I I guess I'll start off with the the question. On the, what is it, the second page of the tip amendment in table one?
Hey, Bob, just, I just wanted to give you, we did pause for two minutes. So if this is kind of a just a generic question offline, that's good. But if this is on online and on the record right there, we're going to give it just another minute until Nancy walks back in the room. And this this sounds like an official comment.
Um, it's it's more just a question and it would probably be something that Aaron could answer.
My apologies, then go ahead.
On page two of the tip in table one, so one more page up. And somebody's looking at that. The question was, why are the the totals for twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six so much smaller than twenty twenty four? And I didn't know if that was because of the bipartisan infrastructure bill. The second column is, you can't see the numbers at the top, but the second column is twenty twenty four. And the third column is twenty twenty five.
Are you talking these, Bob, are you talking these totals right here?
Totals on the second page.
Are you talking here?
Yeah.
Correct.
These are for like DOT, DOT and other federal funds. So you see these gigantic blips of money there? Those are the large scale projects that DOT has added in. So for example, the safer sewer highway is shown in twenty four and that's six hundred, it almost seven hundred million on its own. So that's a big bump in those years, whereas the other years don't necessarily have those large scale projects in there.
Okay, I I guess I had remembered that there was, we were expecting some fairly good bumps from the bipartisan infrastructure bill. And I didn't know if that was where that was showing up or if they were there for another reason.
You know, most of the funding for like the STBG and stuff was wiped out due to inflation. So there wasn't that much of an increase. There was some increase for the discretionary grants and we don't really show those in here because we haven't been directed to put those in, save for some of the few, like the cold storage and other things where they've received them.
Okay, we're back online and I was just going to try to keep this going. We're starting to get a little tight on time. We haven't completely left tip amendment two. We've gone through all of the pre-submitted comments. Thank you, Nancy, for submitting those in advance too. So now I will open it up. We do like comments to be submitted in advance. And please keep in mind that we need to keep this meeting going. We have several other items to include the Pell comments. So I'll open up the floor to any additional comments. Please keep it short, sweet, so we can vote on it before getting too complicated.
I did have one quick question. And I guess it really has to do with funding. The tip is stuff that AMAT is funding is that like this MCR Pell that we're about or the the sewer Glen connection that we're about to discuss, will have projects coming out of it. I'm curious, Aaron, maybe you could answer this. If we have to have placeholders for potential projects coming out of that process in the tip? Or is that just going to be in the like MTP and the STIP? Yeah, I don't like the.
So it's a process. We can't really do placeholders for projects.
Got it.
Because the feds require us to have enough information about the projects to make an air quality conformity determination as well as modeling and fiscal constraint assumptions. And so just saying, eh, we're going to do something in the road, isn't good though. So for that area, we do have to wait until the PEL is done. The twenty fifty MTP already does include projects for that area such as Complete Streets of I N L. And I believe Hyder, like a Wunor or like a Green Street of Hyder. And then a few other, I think, fifth and sixth have something. So there are already projects in the twenty fifty MTP.
Okay, great, thank you. I'll move that we accept these comments as as.
Perfect, thank you, SJ. Can I get a second, second from Mike? Perfect, or any questions, comments? Aaron, any objections to approving the comments?
Who's seconded?
There are no objections, the comments are approved. So moving along, we have our sewer to highway, sewer highway to Glen Highway Pell. And we had a presentation, we were going to do first, yes, please.
You should, Taylor, yeah, you guys shouldn't be able to share just fine if you can't let me know.
You ready for me to share?
Yeah. See how this works. It's it's all sperry today, so I apologize.
It's going to work great.
He was on the line.
I'll be giving the presentation then.
Okay, there, I think we're good, Taylor, go ahead.
Okay, I'm going to start the presentation. Thank you, everyone, for inviting us to come today. So I'm here to give a brief overview on where we are with the sewer to Glen Connection P E L study. By way of introductions, my name's Taylor Horn. I work for the consulting company HDR. We are contracted with DOT and AMATs to help help them work on this project. We've been for this body a couple other times, so this is going to be an update on where we are with the preliminary alternatives process. And please feel free to jump in if you have any questions or clarifications here needed. So very briefly, this is a planning environmental linkage study. What this means is it is a planning process that does not have to be fiscally constrained into the plans we were, y'all were talking about earlier. But the objective of one of these projects is to come out with some sort of planning product that can be adopted into the subsequent NEPA process, which is a environmental process required for any federally funded project. So some of those products include a purpose and need statement, a general idea of the alternative or the corridor. And it could even be a list of potential pro, a project or multiple projects that come out. And the way that's done is through a lot of public involvement and back and forth and getting a lot of input from agencies and stakeholders. So where are we now? Is that we are in a public comment period right now. We've released a suite of lines on a map of preliminary alternatives. So I'm going to go through in this presentation what we saw through some of the research we've done in the past and then briefly talk about the con, what went into the concepts we're presenting. One of the main findings, both from the studying we've been doing and through talking to people in the community and their lived experiences, is that regional traffic traveling on the Glen Highway and the Seward Highway impacts residents in Fairview. And also that includes the heavy traffic moving to and from the Port of Alaska. And what this does is there's conflicts in the types of travel that's going on. There are people driving on the sewer and making the turn, going out the Glen, vice versa, that are transiting the area. And we're considering those regional travelers in vehicles. And then there are a lot of local travelers. These can be people that are driving, that live in the neighborhood, going to the grocery store, trying to go downtown, folks on bikes, folks walking. And what happens is there's conflicts because they're all sharing the same streets, particularly the Gamble Ingrah Cuplet, Fifth Avenue, Sixth Avenue. In addition, and that also creates safety issues with folks trying to cross multiple lanes of of traffic and sometimes people traveling quite a bit above the posted speed. And this is inconsistent with the local plans and I'll go through those plans soon. And there's also a big outpouring that we've heard from the community, particularly folks that live in Fairview, that they have shouldered the burden of these roads and this regional traffic traveling on the surface streets through their neighborhood for over fifty years. And there's an urge to reconnect their community. So what we've done is the project team in these communications kind of boiled down objectives of creating alternatives to bring them out for public comment. And those are displayed on the screen here. That is to reduce those conflicts that I was talking about between regional and local travel across all different modes of travel, that's car travel and bikes and pedestrians, and to improve safety. To improve the, and also reduce the regional travel conflicts and improve the connections for those modes. So to the edges and within the study area. And in doing so, to look for ways to provide economic redevelopment opportunities and to relieve some of that burden that has been borne by the Fairview neighborhood. Here's a list of the adopted plans. And we've tried our best with these ideas to implement the projects that are in the MTP twenty fifty, the Anchorage Land Use Plan Map and the Downtown and Fairview Plans. And I'll call out those features when we're going through some of these. So in general, there's a couple approaches. I'm just going to go through kind of the design approaches, the concepts, and then get into some of the finer details. So approach, a way to reduce Fairview and downtown slash in the regional versus the local traffic conflict is through grade separation. And the idea would be to lower the regional traffic traveling on the highways, try to get out of town and into town, lower that and have ways for local traffic to go over top. And so we tried to find an example where that exists in town. Think about, that looks like Minnesota going down towards the lagoon there. And so these alternatives that are displayed on the screen, there's maps online. There's ways you can really zoom in and see the details of all of them. And so alternative B, excuse me, alternative A, alternative B. And then we have two variants, the kind of mixed features of both of those. Those all include the Seward and Glen Highways being depressed and separating that traffic. Another option, and these are separate alternatives, would be by physically. Another option, and these are separate alternatives, would be by physically separating the local streets on the gut. The Gamble-Ingrah, uh, couplet, and that would be local traffic. And then doing a bypass that moves south of Morel Field. So the alternative C one and C two, they go, if we're coming in from the, uh, east there. You cut, uh, southwest of the airport behind the hospital and then that follows the fifteenth avenue corridor. And then alternative D would not follow fifteenth and cut through, uh, the green space there and be a, a raised, uh, viaduct. So the idea is to, for people that wanna move in and out of town quickly, to move them around Morel Field to the south. Thus returning the neighborhood streets to local traffic. So the other component I was talking about earlier is that there's a lot of heavy traffic. There's, there's trucks that are, that currently move through. The neighborhood. So for each of these alternatives, there's a way to, we're looking for ways to divert the port traffic to a highway interchange. And there's many different options about the, at the like specific configuration of where they can go. Each of the alternatives we're showing on the website and asking for comment has kind of a different idea for these. But the idea is to move, to incentivize the heavy truck traffic to use a different route rather than go. Uh, on those local streets through the neighborhood. Now I'm gonna shift gears for a second and talk about, uh, uh, local streets and non-motorized connections. So I've talked about where the regional traffic goes and now we're gonna talk about where the local traffic goes. And this is where, uh, most of these red boxes you can see on the screen there. Uh, have specific references to an MTP project. And those are a lot of projects that are already in the plan and we're trying to show how. In each alternative, we are accommodating these plans for local traffic. So that would be, uh, the, for example, uh. There's currently a fifth and sixth avenue, complete streets and lane reduction. So in this alternative, which I believe is alternative A, by moving, uh, inbound Glen highway traffic north. And below the bluff there, you could return the streets to be a complete streets that go on Fifth Avenue there. And each alternative also has a regional trail connection. For folks that use the, the moose loop or, you know, the local, the regional trails. There's, right now, there's a gap between Ship Creek and the Chester Creek Trail. So we've also tried to incorporate into these alternatives a way to, uh, for non-motorized, for bikes, for pedestrians. For folks on one wheels to, uh, go along and connect that, the regional trails. And also incorporating as main, uh, open spaces, existing pedestrian routes and creek corridors. Another feature is creating those overpasses for local streets I was talking about. Uh, for example, on tenth, tenth avenue in this, in this example, there'd be a no, non-motorized bridge. We know a lot of people bike across tenth avenue there. And so there'd be a no, non-motorized bridge there. And then, uh, north and south, there would be, uh. Bridges or overpasses, you could call, uh, above the depressed highway. That would then reconnect the communities and allow local travel, travel to go over that regional roadway. In addition. There's also alternatives that explore, uh, for example, the Warnerf idea, which is to create a, uh. Kind of bike-friendly and pedestrian bike-oriented, uh, road. Between Gamble-Ingrah and also, for example, on alternative D. Would be opportunities to create new connections for non-motorized travel. So that was a brief overview. I just wanted to let folks know, we are in the middle of a sixty-day comment period. We have an online open house. There's ways to comment using an interactive map where you can drop pins. There's also all and more information than I presented today, including an interactive map. Where you can zoom in and out and turn on, on and off features in each alternative. And I am done with my presentation.
You kept that very brief. Thank you, Taylor. I know that's a lot of information to sum up in about five minutes right there. So I'm going to really try to limit the comments. I'm sure there's a lot of, uh, questions, comments. But I wanna make sure that we have time to get to our actionable item, which is, uh. Uh, taking action by the Pell comments that were submitted by committee members. So are there any general questions for this presentation? Go ahead.
Yeah, just, just briefly, um, I don't know if we're going to try to, uh, speak in favor of any of these alternatives today. If we are, I do have questions about some of the features of them, uh, because I'm, I'm pretty new. I haven't been studying this for years. And just as a very brief example, uh, you know, alternative C have major spaghetti tangle intersections. Uh, overpasses, underpasses, whatever, uh, at sort of the end of the runway. And I'm just not familiar with that area of like. Use Slendies or anything. So I don't know if we're gonna take action or not.
So the action I was, uh. Remember how we requested comments to be submitted in advance? So we had comments submitted. Uh, S J, I believe, provided comments. So the context that we're taking action right now. Is potentially adopting, uh, or modifying, uh, S J's comments as a, uh, committee. And I was gonna have the same format as we did with the, uh, tip amendment, uh, two. But is there any questions for our presenter? Hearing none, thank you again for the presentation. I know you had a long wait till you could, uh. I know you're a little bit lower on the agenda right there, but I appreciate you hanging out. This gave us a little bit more context for, uh, this next portion. So thank you.
Happy to do it. Thank you.
Okay, with that, S J's.
I will say just, uh, to the credit of A C R and DOT, uh, they, they've done a really bang-up job of. At this stage of the process, um, the, the options that are out there, they're looking for comment to refine and change. The alternatives for the modeling and the testing when they get to the, you know, the next stage, which is. You know, basically evaluating, uh, evaluating the alternatives with selection criteria. So, um. And it's a really hard job because, I mean, right now, our neighborhood, Fairview, has had highway running and. Highway running through the middle of it, uh, for fifty years, um, you know, looking at some of the planning documents from that day. Uh, nineteen sixty-five, one of the planning documents related to this highway, they said right there that this will divide the neighborhood in half. Um, and so, you know, and it's resulted in economic depressions, resulted in countless accidents with pedestrians. Um, it's a very heavily used pedestrian corridor. Uh, and so there's a real, there's a real balance that they're trying to find. And it's a hard one between mobility, which is what, you know, DOT typically cares about. And livability, which is really the exact opposite. I mean, they're, they are, and that's why, that's kind of where these comments come from. Um, this kind of where we wanna make recommendations for assessing this stuff. So. Uh, that said, so the first, the first note, the two goals of the circular impeller are direct conflict with each other. It's impossible to achieve higher vehicle traffic mobility and increase livability quality of life in around facility at the same time. I mean, if you think about it, if your backyard is now abutting one of these trenches. Your, your quality of life has just changed, um.
And S J, just to, there's a couple of different thoughts you're capturing here, this overall comments. And just so we don't have a, a giant, uh, that gets a little bit. If there is any comments or changes right there, would you object of us approving, uh, the paragraph which captures a thought right there?
Hey, I just wanna kind of let you guys know, so the comments are not actually due until April seventh. So because we are so last minute of time, I don't wanna rush you guys through having good discussion involved in this. We could do another special meeting later, if you guys are interested, before April seventh. To have more robust discussion if people need more time to look at things or provide their comments.
And just to be clear, these would be comments submitted by the C A C to the project and that doesn't have anything to do with.
No, actually that's why, that's why we did it. Yeah.
Two TAC, be approved.
Sorry, I forgot, we were waiting for that, um, I wonder if we, you know, okay.
Eric, if you can share, Aaron, does the T A C, you have another meeting before April seventh?
Um, they may, but it, it would be, it would have to go through the policy committee for, uh, approval. So. Uh, yeah, their meeting is April seventh.
So how was it?
All right, let's still just go, uh, per paragraph right now. Um, I think Aaron had a really good point. But now kind of recognizing, I think we all got that, but just make sure, because the TAC would need to approve our comments. And then it would need to go to the policy committee to approve our comments, the delay in coinciding TAC meeting, policy committing. To meet the public comment deadline does turn into a challenge. So I would recommend that, uh, we go through these comments. And at least get something on the record unless you see a different avenue or.
Yeah, as long as we can just do, I, I have to be out of the room by five, so.
Okay. S J.
Okay, so the first paragraph, um, really the point here that I put out there for you to consider is right now. Um, look, you know, it's basically suggesting that livability should be a high priority than mobility. Um, and, and the way to achieve that is by, uh, designing for the minimum realistic flow through. Uh, that can be achieved in compatibility with most local design. So, which.
Questions, comments on that one? Online? Are there any objections to approving the first paragraph and comments associated with it?
Yes, this Chuck, I'd like to make a comment on it. Um, you know, the statement, it's, it is impossible to achieve a higher. Vehicle traffic mobility and increased livability quality of life at the same time. Uh, I kind of disagree with that. With the proper planning, I think both goals can be achieved. Uh, and so I, you know. Really disagree with that statement.
Oh, I, I guess, uh, the, I made the comment on, if you look at the, the actual document, they, they kind of have a, a chart of. Trade-offs in the beginning, the kind of preamble to the alternatives, um, where they, you know. That it basically shows that livability is and, and mobility are inverses proportional. So I guess we could just say that they're inversely proportional, um, instead of impossible. You know, I'm, I'm okay with that.
I just got some great, uh, news that, uh, pass on to the committee here. Uh, the project will accept C A C comments past the deadline. Um, this is absolutely.
Yeah, for the sewer to Glen P E L, Taylor was just mentioning in the chat here, so everybody could see. But, uh, he said that he, the project team would certainly set comments from the C A C after the deadline. So the policy committee would meet April eighteenth. So that would be the, and that would be when we would get approval from the policy committee. And they said they could accept it by then. So. You know, to give the committee and everybody more time, we could meet in March. Uh, sometime in March, I could send out a doodle poll to everybody and have maybe a more, because I feel like we're being really rushed right now.
We got ten minutes and then we're all wittered and we're about to.
So I, I think we need maybe a couple of hours just for this on its own, to, to hash out some of these things. And also give more people or give people more time to look at the alternatives that are out there. Um, so what I recommend doing is I can set up, send out a doodle poll for sometime in April for two hours to get the committee again together.
When you say sometime in April, we're basically, our goal is by before April seventh, is that correct? So do, do, does the technical committee need comment from us? Do they need a week to be able to sit on it?
So here's how it would work. We would need to have everything posted by March twenty-eighth for the April fourth T A C meeting. Um, so as long as we meet, you know, I'll need at least a, a day or so to get everything organized. As long as we meet by like the twenty-fifth of March at the latest, that would be enough time to get everything ready and on the T A C and P C agendas.
Okay, the twenty-fifth, is that a holiday or?
Well, yeah, I would, you know, that's just the latest to greatest. I'd probably recommend, so at this point, we would have to do something the week of the eleventh. Or the eighteenth. March eleventh, sometime in the week of the eleventh and sometime in the week of the eighteenth. So I can send out a doodle poll for those weeks.
Perfect. S J, I know you put a lot of, uh, time and energy into coming with these comments right here, uh, because we're about to, I think we're close to five minutes or.
Yeah.
Are you okay with, uh?
I'll, uh, I'll keep my powder dry, uh, and I'm, I'll plan on submitting more stuff in the comments as well, first to consider.
And I think that's a, a probably a good lesson for the committee to take away. Nothing wrong with, uh, our bold comments right there. But the more specific we can be with almost line item, action items, make it very simple to either approve it or not approve it. Onto the next one, uh, so. And again, it's your guys' discretion of the comments that you wanna bring forward, but I think keeping them as consolidated comments, I think, uh, allow us to get through them a lot easier. Okay, and if you're okay with moving on?
Sure.
Okay, uh, so we'll move past, uh, five C to, uh.
Sorry, can we get an action to relay this meeting and set another special meeting, just so it's on the record?
Yep.
That motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you, discussion. Any objections? Hearing no objections. We've set a new special meeting for the C A C.
So I'll send up the doodle and also make sure to provide timelines of when I need comments from you all, so I can provide that and get it to the committee members.
Very helpful.
Ahead of time.
Thank you. Okay, moving to six projects and plan updates. I am following the agenda regardless of if we have any.
Project that was considered a project or planned. I have no updates other than DOT is working on it.
Too soon.
Sorry, I have like no information other than that it's being worked on by DOT.
I think that's probably the safe answer.
Yeah.
Uh, do we have any general information, Aaron?
Um, none, other than thank you all very much for dealing with this. I know it's been tough with Christine out, so thanks for your patience and my, uh. Kind of slow response or ineptitude on certain things.
You've done an amazing job and we appreciate your energy and time. Uh, general comments, committee comments, do we have any general committee comments wishing to, go ahead Nancy?
Yes, uh, Chair, I was unable to pull together my intent to, um, support. And turning meeting councils with regard to the pedestrian barrier on Minnesota between Benson and Northern Lights. Partly because I started thinking about other, what I call triple bypass intersections on major roads around town where you have to go three ways. When you wanna take a bow on the, on the bus. So, um, if I can continue to work, I will continue to work on that. I don't know if we would have time. At our next special meeting, but I will, uh.
Let's just, uh, let's take action. Well, how about right now? It's because we're setting action right now to add that potentially to the agenda. Uh, so we just had action. Is that a, uh, acceptable friendly amendment to add that to the agenda as a second action item?
So that would be E instead of A on the action items?
Yeah. We good to go with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, hearing any other committee comments? Open it up to the public. Does the public have any comments for the citizens advisory committee? Community advisory committee?
What did I?
Nothing.
Okay, now hearing that, uh, I get a motion to adjourn? We are adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.